Okay, it is seven oh four and we have a quorum of the board present for this special meeting called on October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Call this meeting to order if we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Michelle Roque, please.
Dr. Dave Bardo.
Here.
Bobby Braun, Bill Matic Nelson, Kristen Matt Miller, Andy Mary.
Yes.
Andy Pyatt.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
J.B. Shuride.
Here.
Heather Zoll.
Here.
Number two, I'm sorry, D, public comment. Ted, did anybody sign up? You're not there, you're good. Number two, new category, letter A, Task Force Presentation. This time I'll ask the representative from the Task Force to come to the podium and make their report to the board.
Are we recording this? Do I need to use the mic?
Yes, please.
I'll keep it close by. Well, first, thank you for including me in the Task Force and having the confidence to make this presentation. A little history, one of the Task Force meetings, I was asked to give a little history. Talk about the two thousand and thirteen Task Force and its failures to take action. We would be in probably our seventh year of having a large elementary school on the south end of town and the north end of town. Probably would change that budget a bit, but here we are. I'm not going to read everything because I know you have it. I'm going to hit the highlights of what our recommendations are. It starts with, Facility Task Force believes that the Unified School District of Anago and the overall Anago community must place an importance and sense of urgency on providing a high-level quality education for all of our students while retaining and attracting high-qualified staff. Our first recommendation, Facility's Task Force unanimously agrees that the three existing elementary schools have been used well beyond their useful life and need be replaced. And we list a few items why. Then we go to our recommendation number two. The Unified School District of Anago Board of Education needs to develop a short-term and long-term budgetary plan to effectively maintain all our schools and ensure the physical safety of our students. Recommendation number three, the Unified School District of Anago Board of Education should pursue a capital referendum to build a new elementary school that is designed to house all elementary-age students and provide a high-quality education. Number four, the Facility's Task Force believes that the district should explore the opportunity to partner and collaborate with entities such as the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA to provide wraparound services on our school campuses and offer more access to community use of all of our buildings. Number five, the Facility's Task Force recommends the district conduct a study of best practices for grade-level configurations to inform facility planning. And number six, the Unified School District of Anago Board of Education should develop a solution to address the deteriorating conditions of the aged central office building. Several of our Task Force members are here tonight. I wanted to involve them in a question and answer session at this time. So I guess if we go back to number one and some of the details there, if there's any questions on those, how we came to those conclusions, some of the activities we participated in, including touring some of the buildings while they were empty and a couple of buildings, which was most revealing when they were full of students, staff, community, and so forth, how we came to some of those conclusions, we can answer those questions for you.
Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Brand?
Does it have to be a question only related to number one?
Yeah, let's do that first because it's kind of by topics. It have done well. Any of the members have comments on number one? How we unanimously came to that conclusion? I mean, we were pushing people. We were waiting for somebody to raise a hand saying, no, I disagree with that. Well, we couldn't get anybody to do that.
Could you repeat number one just because you went through the list? And I'm just thinking, this is a really big discussion. And for people listening to, and I don't have my phone at the moment, but can you just repeat number one?
I can. The Facility's Task Force unanimously agrees that the three existing elementary schools have been used well beyond their useful life and need to be replaced.
I think, Gary, you probably should read the A, B, C. That kind of tells why. Because we know the Task Force went to the elementary schools and saw what they were like. So I think you should read that into the minutes.
Sure. Item A, elementary school students are not receiving the type of learning environments they deserve and the needs of our facilities require the urgent attention of the Board of Education. Item B, the district does not have enough space in the elementary schools to accommodate all of the resident elementary-age students. The school structures are in disrepair, placing our students at a disadvantage. Their learning environments are not conducive to a high-quality educational experience for all students. Part of that is if all the kids we've talked about that have out-enrolled, who decide to come back, we have no place to put them. Item C, the Facility's Task Force identified the following themes and concerns about the elementary schools. Anybody have a question on A or B? How we came to those conclusions? Okay. Impact on learning. Negative impact of outdated facilities on day-to-day instructional needs and overcrowding affects students' ability to focus and learn effectively. Those things we saw when we toured North Elementary. And then when we toured West Elementary during the middle of the day, it became really obvious about what our students and staff were experiencing or are not able to experience. Any questions on what we observed there? Space constraints. Insufficient space for classes and services. We witnessed spaces with dual uses simultaneously, a constant distraction to both groups of kids in there. Limited space for both students and teachers. In one school, we saw where they had taken four feet of one classroom and four feet of another and made an eight-foot closet, and it was somebody's teaching station behind twenty feet of storage. Lack of green space on school premises. Every one of our elementary schools is landlocked and the playground consists mainly of asphalt. Inadequate space for modern learning methods and services. In every classroom, we saw an abundance of things stored, which really put a cramp on what was happening there. Lack of sufficient space for special education and title services. Remember, these buildings were designed in nineteen sixty and special ed wasn't really part of the education process. Overcrowded classrooms and limited space for teaching materials. Again, things were just piled up and tried to find a space for the student to sit down. Any questions on space constraints? Any comments from the members that were on those tours?
Yes.
Make a comment, come up to the mic too. Yeah.
He said he agreed. All right. Accessibility issues. Bathroom's not meeting any accessibility standards. Again, it's nineteen sixty design and a lot of things have changed since then. Even though we haven't been forced to upgrade, those upgrades should have happened. Concerns about the availability of accessible spaces for special education services. I think it was North Elementary. I don't know how many kids would have been in that space had school been in session, but they're all in the same space with multiple teachers. Which teacher is the child listening to? There had to be great confusion there. Item four, shared spaces. Classroom shared with special programs like STEAM, art, and music. And this is going on throughout the day where they would change over from one program to the next and kids in and out. And I don't know how the teachers would organize their classes because they're stumbling over the other specialist's materials. Gym and cafeteria serving as shared space often inadequate for indoor physical education classes. I used to be one of those FIAID teachers that had to stop your day, put all your things away for lunch to happen. And then all the time it took to get it all back out again, that was class time that the kids were denied. We didn't see that part of it in action because when we were at one of the schools for the tour, it was right in the middle of the lunch period. So we didn't see the hassles that the FIAID teacher had to deal with. Air quality and maintenance. Concerns about air quality and its impact on student health. Consideration of potential mold sources and sewer gas leaks and issues with outdated facilities and fire hazards. Any comments on what really struck the people on those tours? Yes, come on up.
So one of the things that kind of struck me first was, I only toured the one over North Elementary. A few of the things that struck me first was the inadequate space that the students have for learning and especially the special education, that they don't have the learning space that they need. And then the one room, if I can remember correctly, was somewhere in towards the front of the building. They had, it's split right down the middle, one was parked, I guess you want to call it a library? I sure as hell wouldn't call it a library, but it was split between a library and a classroom. When I was in school, fifteen-plus years ago, we didn't have that. For some reason, we have that now. I know the students and grades have greatly increased since then, but that shouldn't happen. It really shouldn't. And going back to the learning environment, that is severely outclassed. It shouldn't happen at all. And then when I was touring one of the rooms on the, what would be the, I want to say the western end of the building, there was a makeshift closet, I guess you'd call it a closet maybe if you really wanted to, but it had, yeah, a sub-pump in it. And that was the closet slash sub-pump room or whatever, in a classroom. That's no bueno, man. And then the outside was fairly okay, really liked the security aspect of it. I want to keep our kids safe, safe. But other than that, yeah, the learning environment is just not up to par. I mean, even when I was, I'm sure it's similar to East Elementary where I currently went to school. I only went there for one year and then transferred over to the middle school. But even then, it was subpar. And that was a while ago. But I can't say how more than enough we need this new school. But we have to make sure that the right information gets out to the people so they're not saying, well, I didn't know about this, so I'm not going to vote for it. This needs to happen ASAP in all capital letters. I don't know if any of the other members want to add something, but Carol?
I'm Carol Bardo. I'm a retired occupational therapist. So most of my experience in education is in spec ed. And I actually worked in some of these schools when I first moved to this area many, many years ago. And it was crowded then. I did some therapy in closets, but they were not as crowded. And most of my career has been working to reduce stimulation, conducive environments so a child could focus and stay on task. And I was overstimulated in going through these, and these are without students. But with students, I just basically plastered myself in it as well. It was overwhelming. And there was, I know one of the resource classes, there were three different stations. So simultaneously, there would be three different small groups of children with special needs attempting to learn. And that's impossible. I know North Elementary, forty percent, they have forty percent children receiving some type of special services. And as we talked about, these schools in the nineteen sixties, I was in elementary school in the nineteen sixties. Spec ed was in a room all by itself. That is not, that is not the way education is done now. So we need to be cognizant of all of our students' needs and what we have now is not conducive to learning. And that is what we are all about. So, and one thing, I also wanted to say that I was so pleased to see, I think there was a total of what, forty total people that participated, different numbers of different medians, different. But it was, it was an array of multiple people coming from this community. We had business owners, we had parents, we had staff members, we had people on the left politically, we had people on the right politically. But when it all came to the time when we had to sit down and talk about what we said, we unanimously said, we need to do better for our students. And I think that's what we need to convey to our community, that it is, it's time. And I was grateful to be a part of this.
Thank you, Carol. Item six was restroom and storage challenges. Inadequate restroom facilities, particularly for pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. I believe it was at West, there's a common bathroom that's in a kindergarten class. The other class, if they need the bathroom, they have to interrupt the kindergarten class to access the bathroom. And then it's also the special ed bathroom, and they have to come from the far end of the building. Whatever happened to that child gets displayed to the entire school before they get to that special ed bathroom. Lack of storage space in kindergarten classrooms leading to potential distractions for students. I mean, there's visual distractions all over the room at all times. Infrastructure concerns, absence of a kitchen facility. Roof and heating-cooling system issues affecting the overall conditions of the buildings. It was a common complaint that can't maintain a reasonable temperature. It's either too hot or too cold. Kids are falling asleep or shivering. Any questions or comments so far on that? That was pretty much the laundry list.
Has, was there any discussion regarding busing and pickup-drop off specific to elementary
We talked about it at North a little bit because we've changed that. We made those streets one-way, so it's much safer and accessible.
It was by east the other day, I think. And I was, why are all these vehicles on that? And then I looked at the times, realizing it was the end of the day for school pickup. So I was just curious because I know that has been an area discussed by parents in individual schools and making that adjustment for the one schools I didn't know if it came up with the near tours or discussions.
I don't, it may have come up in some side conversation, but it wasn't part of what we were looking at. We were well aware that it's unsafe because we're using city streets and the number of parents and grandparents that are picking up the kids complicates the whole thing. And especially when you've got a substitute grandmother or grandpa doing that pickup for the first time, they really don't know where to go. So it's very confusing because they can come from so many different directions and which side of the street and so forth.
The other thing, Joe, is that as we go forward and if we accept this, depending on where the new school would be built, obviously the busing will change. And I know Jake has said at a Task Force meeting that once everything is decided, then they will figure out a system that would include the high school, the new school, and the middle school. And it probably won't be where the middle school is, the spot where everybody gets on buses and changes. It's probably going to be where middle school comes toward the high school and somewhere up here would probably be where the restructuring of getting kids on buses would be. So there is, I know Jake is looking at that, but it'll be after everything happens.
So when we were touring the different schools, I wish there would have been just a ton of the community members there. Because even though, you know, the answer I was getting when I was asking people, why weren't you there? It was, well, I'm in that school all the time. I could go there. I go there all the time. I know what it looks like. You know what it looks like on the surface? We were diving into the really deep stuff, looking at the, you know, the heating systems, the water systems, the roofs, everything. And that's where you really get the good picture to know where, you know, where we're at with these buildings. Because before I got on the board, I would have never guessed that the buildings were in such bad condition. So I really wish more people would have taken advantage of that. If we have more tours in the future, I think the community really, really needs to get out and to come see them.
And that's one of the things we talked about in our final meeting was the challenge we're going to have in educating the people and giving them many opportunities to go in those buildings and justify this recommendation. I believe if anybody saw what we saw, they would agree. And this next statement kind of wraps it up. Our fiduciary responsibilities to the public. The district needs to develop a short-term, immediate plan for our buildings and a long-term plan for our facilities. The district needs to ensure there is a proper budget to maintain the middle school and high school aging buildings while a new elementary school is built with a focus on ensuring the physical safety of students and staff. The district should prioritize opportunities to find energy savings to cut operational costs. When we talked about all the buildings, there was as much concern for this building and the middle school to maintain those so they last another fifty years for us in addition to a new building. And that has to be taken care of so we can get fifty to a hundred years out of that. When Jake says the middle school will last another hundred years, not if we don't take care of it. That's always with the little, we have to take care of it. We have to spend the money to maintain it. And when we toured the middle school, I had been through the middle school on a similar tour ten years prior, and some cosmetic things have changed, but the guts of the building haven't changed. And that's why your comment that people see it on the surface, you have to see the operations of it, the guts of the building, and the things that have been cobbled and held together.
I want to go back to comment on number one. I think that the recommendations and the justifications is well laid out and very thorough. It paints a very good picture. When you stop at elementary school during the school day and you're buzzing to get in and the school secretary is on the phone while buzzing you in while you have a sick kid laying on a cot, another one coming down because they have a headache and administering meds for another kid because it's ten oh five and that's what time they get theirs. And then you have the visitor coming in and a teacher coming down to get whatever in a very crowded space. That's just your, that's just your first room you walk into. And what I think the Task Force did a very good job painting in the explanation is that experience of when you walk into the building just to get your student or to find out a meeting location or whatever your purpose is, that experience is consistent throughout the whole building because of all the strategic uses that aren't ideal. But again, I credit to our district and our staff with being able to utilize what they have. But that chaotic environment is consistent from the time you set foot in the building until you get back outside. And I think that's what was well laid out here and I appreciate about it.
And anywhere in educational philosophy, chaos is not a part of it. It's to eliminate the chaos so kids can focus and learn. Another statement, there are substantial infrastructure needs for all elementary schools that far surpass the district's ability to address them through the normal budgeting process. Some of the comments were, we looked at what's been put into those buildings over the last three or four years for dollars. If we had those dollars back and the amount of money that Jake has in a long-term plan for those buildings, that's a big start on the cost of a new building. And the comment of we've thrown good money after bad was made several times as Jake was shown some of the things that have been done to kind of cobble the buildings together to make them last another year or two, but never a plan to long-term replace them. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to be in Jake's position where I got to cobble this together, but don't spend so much money that it makes us want to use this building for another ten years. The facilities cannot be maintained with current available funds and the buildings are becoming unsafe for our students. The sewer gas thing. I know a family that was poisoned by sewer gas because the seal around their toilet in their house was letting sewer gas out. Now, you know, in the middle of the night, when nobody's taking a shower running water, all those sewer systems below our streets get very empty of water, but they fill up with gas. And now in the morning, when all the toilets flush and the showers are running and the water starts displacing that air, if your toilet seal leaks, that sewer gas is coming into your home. And it will really mess with the kid's mind. We don't know how much that's happened. That covers it, what we recommended.
I just want to say something building off of what you're saying about the first one. So one thing that was discovered was North Elementary in the back, am I correct? There was a hole that, yeah, by the concrete where they keep putting fill into it, but the fill keeps, you know, washing away, going away or whatever. So we're not sure if there's like a sinkhole underneath that school building or what the deal is, but something's not right with the ground there. So that's a major concern. Yeah, major concern.
And it'll be an ongoing challenge forever and not a good one. Question, Dave?
No, I was going to say something, but take Christian first.
You're up.
I'm Christian Radcliffe. I'm a local business owner. I speak for a few of the other business owners downtown and throughout the community that we really want a fifty to a hundred-year long-term solution after we address the immediate stuff. I want a long-term low bill rate. I don't want to pay things I don't have to fifty years from now. And for tracking people here, reducing grain drain and everything else, I really want to invest in the community now for later. It just, it makes much more sense. It's a good example for our students. It's how I would want them to live their lives as an example. So I would like to reflect that in our actions too, and I believe we are with our holistic approach to the finances that you guys have done and the diligence in the exploration of the schools. I've seen a lot of caring from the community here and there is addressing of certain problems with transportation and efficiency of location that I would love to see addressed long-term. But efficient use of time and resources for the community and people involved, the staff and everyone, it's the most precious, sorry, it's the most precious resource we have other than the money we're spending. So efficient use of everyone's time in the long-term is the best solution we have, especially debating about these things long-term. The entropy is going to be really bad if we don't, so please do it again. Thank you.
Dr. Bardo?
First of all, I want to thank all the Task Force members. There were so many that came in over the couple months. I was able to be at most of them and they worked well together. It was amazing that on the final day, all of them raised their hand basically and said, yes, this is what we need to do. We need to go to referendum. We need to build a new school for our youngest kids. I want to thank Angie and Danny because they ran the Task Force. I want to thank Mrs. Ojinski for what she did. And I want to thank the Donovan Group for leading the presentations and coming up with this document that's going to be before the board in this, for an action item. And I'm just thankful for everyone who worked on this. And it's the first step in where we're going. And as Danny said at the last meeting, there will be another Task Force because we have, we will have more planning to do if the board accepts this and we move forward to actually plan to build a new school. And in closing, there's only one other person that led the way, and that's Jake. And Jake, you did an amazing job and I'm so proud of you.
I don't believe Jake missed one single meeting and led the discussion of all of our buildings, had a great knowledge of had a great knowledge of all of our buildings. And, uh, so, good job with all of you.
Can you guys talk about the great configuration recommendation? I was kinda hoping you'd just tell me the answer, like, we should build a K-four or a K-five or a K-three.
I mean, our charge was to evaluate the physical buildings that we have, and those topics came up, but we intentionally stayed away from it because, as Dave alluded to, there'll be another task force that talks about that. Is, you know, we have to educate the community in a number of ways. First of all, they need to realize that we need a new building for our youngest kids. And it's the most important is, if those kids don't get a good start in education through grade three, I don't care if we put them in a Taj Mahal, they're never gonna catch up. They're gonna be behind forever. So, we need to convince the community that we have that need first. And then as we develop those plans, we need to talk about what is the ideal situation for kids in grade configuration? What will that be? Knowing that they'll all be in the same building, how do we, how do we do that? What will best serve those kids? So, that's the next task force.
It was, uh...
Well, I was just gonna say that, um, and I'm thinking like a superintendent now, but that should come from Mrs. Ojinski and letting the board know what she feels is the, with her expertise and the expertise of the other people who work at Dorce Street, to tell the board what the proper educational configuration should be. That's, that's my opinion.
I also appreciate that you're not coming with a solution by having a configuration. I think that's really important. So, you were tasked with looking at the physical buildings.
Yep, the deficiencies and the needs.
Yes, of the building, and that coming to the board with a solution with a configuration. And I know that is also, I would like that too. Right now, uh, but that's not what you were tasked with. And I think that's, I appreciate that immensely because you weren't seeking to, um, come up with the outcome that you want. You were seeking to objectively look at the buildings from an operational standpoint and meet the needs educationally, and you did that. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And now we have to take that to the community. We all, you have to be preaching the same story and encouraging people. I think we should be having open houses at those buildings because people are gonna say, "I don't believe that." Well, we need to give them the opportunity. We need to take the ideas to the people and show up at churches, service groups, wherever we can find a group of people that will listen is to take the message to them so that they have the chance to go and verify and see what we saw. And I, I challenge anybody to go into those buildings and say, "Ah, this is good enough for our kids." Because it's not. It's unsafe. They're not getting the education they could if they were in the right environment. Our teachers don't have a chance to do what they're capable of because they're not in the right environment. So, that'll be an ongoing challenge as to, I mean, I don't know where our deadline is, where the referendum hits the ballot. But those are things that have to be done along with all of that other planning and configuration, how and where and those things. You know, we have to rebuild the trust in the community that, uh, we have the facts and what to do. We're gonna have to bite the bullet with some expenses. We're gonna hold a line on taxes at City Hall this year, but we can't forever. But this is an expense that the community has to deal with. Or our future's finished. We can't be hearing about people that don't come here because of our school system. It's gotta be a reason to come. Because there's a lot of reasons to leave the big cities.
Michelle, can you pass your mic back to Carol?
Yes, I think what we really need to get through to this commi- community that it is not just for our young children. This, this project is for our community. Because if we do not build it so they will come, there will be no community.
It's an investment that will pay off to all the businesses and citizens of our area.
Angie?
I just, I know Jill, you, you had mentioned earlier about the kids being in chaos and everything, but also I wanna bring up our teachers, the work environment that they are in. I give them so much credit because they are, they're making do with what they have, and they're making it work. But it's, it's hard. I mean, being a teacher is hard enough already. And now we just added all this other stuff on top of it. And so, I think that they deserve to have, you know, a good work, uh, work environment. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was, uh, with, with this task force, I know some people are gonna say, "Well, of course, they went straight to wanting to build a new building." That's what they always say, right? But I was pushing to see if we could remodel any of these buildings. Can we add on to the buildings? So, we didn't. I want people to know that we didn't just jump to referendum and looking at, you know, a new school. We actually took into consideration all of the other, you know, options, and it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. It's throwing more good money after bad.
But I think we have to speak in terms that people will understand to their own life. I mean, an example is you inherit a home from Grandma and Grandpa who didn't take care of their home for many years, and it's deteriorated to the point where you need to put a hundred fifty thousand dollars in it. And when you're done, you're gonna have a home that's worth maybe less than a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Would you put the money into it, or would you start over? And we're responsible for taxpayers' dollars to do the right thing and make the right investments, and this is the right thing to do. If, if they value how their dollars are spent, let's not waste any more and put anything more into those buildings. Let's save it for the new building. But that's gotta happen soon enough where Jake doesn't have to Band-Aid those buildings every day.
Jill?
Yeah, you, uh, it was brought up strategic plan throughout the evening, whether in the, I don't think really much in this meeting, but the prior. Uh, and I have been very vocal about wanting a strategic plan. And what you included in here is a fiduciary responsibility to have a budgetary plan in place. And Kelly, in your discussion and budget hearing, talked about needing short-term and long-term goals. Um, so that way, when we have things brought to the board, we can go to our strategic plan and feel very confident as to why you're voting yes or no, uh, because it ties to district goals and plans. So, I think that component is incredibly crucial to the recommendations provided to the board because we are in this position because we did not plan and budget accordingly over the course of countless years. So, that's not a this board, previous board. This is like eight, many, many years in the making. Uh, but we can't repeat that pattern because a new building that's not maintained is gonna get us here again. And so, I think that's a crucial component should the board vote to move in favor of this, is ensuring that, um, we do have a, a budget and a plan of how we're gonna sustain it because I think that's a key with not passing in the past is you didn't do your due diligence with financial responsibility to this point. Not gonna do that to set up and fail again. So, I appreciate hearing strategic plan from the budget component that has been shared by our superintendent over the course of recent meetings as well. I think it's key, so I appreciate that, and thank you.
And we're laying the groundwork for many years in advance. When we talked about long-range planning, we're talking fifty to seventy-five years that the plan is laid out, that this new building, when it's paid off, the plan is to put money right back in it to maintain it so it's still here seventy-five years from now. So, the kids that are gonna go to kindergarten there are gonna, the people that sit here forty years from now and sit in their retirement or, that are paying property taxes sixty, seventy years from now, but they saw the plan and it was fulfilled.
JD?
I'm in favor of this. Good work, everybody. Whenever we, we do this, it's hard because we don't have that much money. Because, you know, we've been coming up here for meetings for years, and every year I'm like, "Jake, can you please replace these faucets? This water does not stay out." And he's like, "There's no money. I can't fix the, I don't have any other bathrooms in this high school, but I hope they work better." But in so, but it's not because he just, he doesn't have enough money in his budget. But it's also important to pay staff. And so, like, and then I'm always like, "Well, would I rather pass an operating referendum and give the staff a raise so we have teachers? It doesn't do us any good if we don't have any teachers to have a good building." So, it's really hard to, and maybe this will help attract teachers or not, but it's just a hard, you know, there's always trade-offs and tough choices. So, we need to be able to do both and to say, "Well, we need to fund these buildings." But I don't know how we structure a referendum, you know, if it's a two-question referendum, or maybe it comes after, "Hey, we're building this building. Here's another question. We need this X amount of money to keep up taking the other buildings. Hey, I'd like to pay the teachers too, but we just raised our taxes already." I don't know. You put three questions right on a switch, and then we go to Kelly's question. If we fail a referendum, we can't up our low-revenue money. You know, so it's a gamble.
Those are all the challenges that we have to educate the community on, all those variables.
Dr. Bardo?
The other thing, at the last, um, meeting, I talked about Fund Forty-Six. And, um, when Kelly talked about the managing Fund Ten, to do it better by using our federal grants and the ESER this final year, hopefully, as I, as I told, uh, the people at the task force, we will be able to start by doing things differently and more strategically and with more wisdom. We will end up, even with giving raises, we will end up with more money going into Fund Forty-Six. And that what that, what we will need to do with that is that those funds are going to be needed for the high school and the middle school because the new building will be good for a while. And we need to upgrade these two buildings with our Fund Forty-Six money so that when we need to start taking care of three buildings, we will have the other two in a shape where, as we keep hitting Fund Forty-Six, we can take care of three buildings and not let any one of these three buildings end up like the three that are in the city.
Jill?
I would love for the task force member that had a comment after JD's comment.
Christian?
Christian?
Christian.
I would, I'm interested in your feedback, if you remember what it was at when JD was talking, because I know you said representing businesses and business owners, and I just think that's a helpful perspective.
Yeah, I actually came here to maybe be a teacher or a sub at first, but we decided against it in the school district because of the pay and the conditions and the horror stories we heard. I, I think they were overblown a tiny bit, but there's a lot of truth there. So, it has prevented a few of the people we've had moving out to this area to teach, to be parents. It's been bad for even, uh, getting, uh, employees out here, so it's been a problem.
Thank you. I do know at one of the earlier task force meetings, I think it was, it was, Spire's had representation here, and the, when they have prospective docs or positions that are hard to fill, uh, they have an applicant, they'll do kind of a tour. And driving past our schools is visually not fulfilling. So, we also lose by not bringing those families to our district. They will, you know, the provider at Spire's will travel here so the families can stay there. So, you're, I agree with you in terms of operational facilities and where to put money. But I do think, uh, routinely, what's been consistent is, uh, teachers don't wanna stay here that aren't tied to the community because we aren't paying as well as others. And, and that's neither here nor there because it's name or price tool. I get that. But what is keeping them here, it's not the facilities. So, that will, I believe, bring in and retain qualified staff to our community as well.
Any other questions?
I do wanna add the, the thanks that Dr. Bardo has mentioned. I will not mention all of those names again, but, uh, Mayor Terry Brand was actually scheduled to be at a meeting tonight. And, uh, this meeting went a little longer than what was anticipated. So, uh, thank you for taking time out of your schedule to make that presentation on behalf of the task force.
This is very important to the city.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
We're partners in this, counties partners in this. We all live in the same community, so we all have to work together on it. So, you have my commitment for the future to serve on future task forces and to convince other people to make the commitment to serve on that next task force because that's gonna be the tough one. That's where the real brain power's gonna come in.
Yes.
We didn't have to use a lot of brain power to realize that those three buildings need to be closed and replaced. But now we're gonna have to be creative to really sell this to the community, so.
And we all heard that the mayor, uh, made the statement that he's holding the taxes at the city, uh, this, this time. But you can't do it very long.
For now.
For now. North of the middle school.
Did you guys have strong thoughts on central office? Would you move it into one of the adult buildings?
Well, we did. But we didn't wanna emphasize it. Just pointed out that if you can incorporate that into the new use of any space in this building or the middle school, it would probably enhance your loss of expenses that are not needed. And it's, it's an inefficient building for a number of reasons. So, we didn't wanna emphasize it, but it should be considered. Just like the consideration of the Boys and Girls Club to YMCA. Anything that can enhance the community and enhance the school, especially if it doesn't cost us extra money. If there's money that comes with the Boys and Girls Club or comes with the YMCA to pay for their space, it will enhance this campus.
I believe Christian has one last comment.
I would like constant impact and, uh, just something from the larger companies and larger, I know Volm might be interested in, at Carl's Transport. I don't know who else in the community would, but I know there's interest in investment. So, if they could be considered in the referendum too long-term. I know you guys already are, but I wanted to mention them here too real quick, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for listening to our recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item number three, letter A, task force recommendations. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve. I move the board to approve the task force's recommendations.
Motion's been made by Andy. Andy, would you like to speak to your motion?
I guess I'd just like to say thank you to all the people who worked on it and, uh, to the Donovan group that so well-written up, uh, recommendation.
I would say, uh, on, on that ending, most, I saw him at a lot, Andy, at a lot of the, uh, the meetings. We were well represented from the board aspect too, uh, at all the task force meetings. And I appreciate all the board members taking your time out of your already tight, busy schedule, uh, to show up and be at parts of these meetings as well. I didn't cut you off, did I, Andy?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing no other discussion. Uh, since we don't, we do not have our voting devices, we're gonna handle this the old-fashioned way. And I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. If you are in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by raising your hands if you are in favor of the motion on the floor. I don't believe I need to ask if you're opposed because I saw all hands up, but if you're opposed, raise your hand. And the motion carries. Thank you once again to the task force. Our, our work is just beginning. The work begins. Item, letter B, consideration to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget as presented at tonight's budget hearing with total expenditures in all funds in the amount of thirty-two million, forty-seven thousand and a hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Motion's been made by Andy. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I'd just say it was a nice presentation from you, Kelly, and, uh, we kinda have to move forward here. Uh, it was a lot of work to get the low-revenue limit, um, raised. And I think it's gonna give districts like Anago a, a more even playing, playing field.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor?
I'd just thank you to the business office. I just thank you to the business office for all the work you put into this and the very detailed, thorough information you've shared.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Angie?
Next year, we should plan for longer than $30,000. Is this a full thinking?
Maybe Kelly will be more concise next year.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Not next year's budget hearing. Good point, though. Yes, I do want to say before we open the floor for the vote, thank you to Kelly and your business office. I don't believe it was just the business office. I think the whole central office probably had a hand somewhere in making this happen and to Mrs. Ojinski for coming alongside and working on a lot of those late nights and probably early mornings. I don't, I don't know what the schedule's like, but thank you so much. Please go back and convey to the whole central office how much the board appreciates all of the hard work for this budget that's been presented. Okay, having said that, we are going to be approving the motion, voting on the motion that is on the floor. And this time we cannot show a show of hands because we're dealing with money. Michelle, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Dave Bardo?
Yes.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Andy Pyatt?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Captain Solon?
And that motion carries. Thank you. Item letter C, consideration to approve tax levy. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the tax levy of $9,368,180 with an estimated mill rate of $6.21 per 1,000 of assessed value.
Motion on the floor by Dr. Bardo. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Going back to what Mr. Mary said, we have a, we have a chance to increase our amount that we get per student and going from $10,000 to $11,000 is very important for this district and I will be voting in favor.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Would anybody else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Third and final time, would anybody like to speak to the motion on the floor? All right, hearing no discussion. Michelle, we'll do another roll call vote, please.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Andy Pyatt?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Captain Solon? Dr. Dave Bardo?
Yes. And the motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, closed session, consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 19.85, section one of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering letter C, employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. I will be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Can I ask who said that? Andy, thank you. Andy, would you like to speak to that motion?
No.
All in, I'm sorry. Michelle, we need to do a roll call vote, please, of going into closed session.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Andy Pyatt?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Captain Solon? Dr. Dave Bardo?
Yes.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are now in closed session. Okay, we have come out of closed session and the action of closed session is that the board voted unanimously to accept the new superintendent evaluation process that we, that will be going into effect immediately. Any other questions? All right. Move, motion to adjourn from Andy Mary, all in favor. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. This meeting is adjourned.